Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our special council meeting of July the fourth. I'll call the meeting to order and uh first thing we need to do is adopt the agenda. A recommendation here that the agenda for the July fourth twenty twenty three special meeting of council be accepted and passed. Could I get a mover in a second or for that, please? Counselor McCabe? Counselor Burke, thank you. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We'll move on to disclosure of community interest on anything on today's agenda. I have none to declare. Counselor McCabe?
I have none.
Counselor Burke?
No.
Counselor Hearn?
No.
And Counselor Rankin?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. So first thing we have is a deputation from Crombie Property Holdings Limited. And I am assuming Todd and Michael, you guys are the representatives of that. Uh so if you guys would like to make your pitch, now's the time.
Okay, we had some other colleagues that were going to join us for this pitch.
Did you want us to wait a minute or two or?
Yeah, I just I wouldn't mind waiting just because they're the ones that are going to speak to this a little bit more than we are. So I would just want to see. I'll just put a quick message out to our team here and just make sure everyone's available.
Sure.
Yeah, Aaron was unable to make it. Michael, I know um. I but I did believe Robert was attending.
Yeah, I'm just following up right this second. One second. Okay, that's a joke. Just see if he responds here in the next minute or so, otherwise we'll uh move forward.
We should probably just try and see through this. Michael, this is a new process to me. I don't want to hold the everyone up.
Yeah, uh so basically, as the uh as the agenda is outlined here, I believe there was a budget presented um and then you've there's some amendments to that budget have been made over the course of the design as the scope has evolved and we've um that scope has expanded and I believe for our twenty twenty three budget as outlined in the agenda here, we are looking to replace our previously provided budget with this updated costs for our cost sharing agreement. This would be, this is what we're presenting here today in terms of the cost that we've that we've gone up to tender with and then come back with them from the market. And so uh further that the council and we've presented here uh as so the initial agreement or the initial sum of of um I believe it was such something like here now of the nine hundred and
nine hundred and twenty eight.
That's right. Yeah, just look at that initial number now. And now we're proposing the adjusted number of one million, three hundred thirty four thousand, seven hundred ninety sixty nine and forty four cents. Uh so we're we're presenting that we would base our cost sharing based on this event on on this budget outlined in our twenty twenty three budget. And with that, we'd like to lift the holding precision or provision based off of this agreement. And once we have come to an understanding on this uh on the the structure of our cost sharing deal so that we can subsequently move forward with our building plans and and the issue, the the required building permits associated with with our works. In a nutshell, that's that's what we're presenting here today.
Okay, just just for clarity purposes, the budget has gone up by post well, four hundred thousand and change in total. And the expectation from your group is what exactly with that change in budget?
We would like to enter a new cost sharing agreement with the town based on this new figure of one million, three hundred thirty four thousand, seven hundred sixty nine dollars and forty four cents as outlined in in the agenda here. Uh how it breaks out evenly amongst the different parties involved.
So with the change in budget, just could you spell it out for us, please? What uh what you're asking here?
We are asking for the town to agree based on this revised number to go enter into a cost sharing agreement.
No, I'm asking for the dollars.
Uh for the the difference in in between the two?
Yes, the difference that you're asking of the township.
Okay, based on that, I'm just gonna do math here quickly. Give me one second. One second, sorry.
Yeah, the difference is spelled out there in the in the agenda. It's an additional two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and eighty four seventy two.
Oh, yes.
Right, bringing the total to six hundred and five, eight eighty four seventy two.
Thanks. Thank you. No, I just wanted to be. I just want to be crystal clear about what what's uh what's involved here. Okay. Did you have anything further you wanted to add at this point, or will you open things up for some questions from council members?
Uh we can open it up. Okay, go ahead, Tom.
No, I was just, I assume uh the scope was was known. I I haven't been party to any of these meetings prior, so I'm I'm a little bit new here coming in, so uh which it's for a a lit intersection, four way intersection entering our site and also just taking into account the egress from the site opposite us as well on to the city street.
Okay, and so I assume that your crew, your team has had discussions with our staff in regard to this uh changed estimate?
I I believe Robert Blacklock had submitted it with your staff um and let's get gone through what's been kind of back and forth a couple of times, uh gone through the engineering process, received city comments, and this is the final version of it at pricing.
Okay. Darren, can I put you on the spot for a minute? Just if you wouldn't mind, Darren, just walk us through where we are and how we got here. Um because I mean, we're asking council to support spending some more money, so I'd just like to understand the background if we could.
Um, yep. So so Crombie has applied for a site plan approval. Uh they were given some provisional approval to get going to um to make some renovations to the existing T S E store so they could uh be ready for that whenever they got going. They've got a site plan approval for the site. And they've got a conditional uh building permit for foundation um on the property. Um where we are with the zoning um and the holding provision is based on the public meeting for the zoning amendment. Uh council asked uh I made a condition that a cost sharing agreement and a road entrance design acceptable to the township be provided. Um so we've worked through with the township engineer and the developers engineer and MTO and came up with a a design of the intersection that's uh that's acceptable to uh to all parties. Uh the numbers that uh probably provided to us, the nine hundred and twenty eight thousand uh were just from late fall last year and uh staff uh and uh Crombie worked out a a number of a township contribution of uh of around six hundred and some thousand dollars. Have some of that being collected from uh from Canadian Tire. And then paid back to uh to Crombie through uh through their construction.
Thank you. Questions from members of council? Yes, Council McCabe?
So uh Alfred Fox Bosch or Fok, whoever the contractor is that they um Crombie Holdings picked that contractor to to build this, is that right?
Yes, through our general contractor.
Yeah.
Uh B M I.
So where are we right now? Because I know I've heard some um just had talks with some people uh involved in this from both sides. So where are we with what we need from Crombie Property Holdings and what you need?
So in order for the township to issue the final building permit, um the township and Crombie need to enter into this cost sharing development agreement for the construction of the intersection. And once that's done, then a bylaw needs to come to council, uh removing the holding provision. And uh the remainder of the holding provision uh conditions have been satisfied through uh through their site plan approval.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so this, the uh signal light is the only outstanding item for site plan approval?
Uh through you, Mayor Lennox, uh this agreement that's uh that's before you in the agenda is essentially the only item uh left outstanding uh that council and the developer need to uh to agree on and then removing the holding provision is uh uh is another step that needs to happen. And that's a bylaw approved by council.
Thank you, Darren. So um I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say that uh based on these numbers, um I can't support going over budget. We've got so many items uh in our budget that continue to go over. And I do understand that con- construction continues to go up. We see that as a municipality. Uh a lot of our projects have increased uh when it comes time to build. Uh so um this, I think, is just a contingency uh based on that through uh Crombie Property Holdings that we all know that uh prices go up. Um so I'm not really interested in moving on the number that we uh approved previously.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Rankin?
Thank you, Mayor Lennox. Um I was just wondering with the extra amount that we're being asked to pay um as constable, as Counselor Burke has mentioned, prices have gone up. I think this was a fact that has been known for the last few years for the increase. And so I'm just wondering what Crombie's reaction would be um if we decided not to support this.
Well, um that would have to go back to our uh Director of Development, Robert Blacklock. The change in the price, we we had a kind of a conceptual design back when the first estimate was put forth. And we've been revised the drawings, I think, two or three times and added city comments. And then that that's what raised the price. It wasn't an increase in the exact same design. It was uh added scope um that changed the price.
Hey, Counselor Burke, go ahead.
Yeah, I have another question based on the quotation. Um did, is this uh, has this been sent out to multiple tenders uh to get uh competitive pricing or do we just, do we just use, uh do you folks just use um preferred contractors when you're looking for for quotes?
No, this went out to a number of contractors. Um I believe it was probably five or six numbers. I would have to find out who those all were. Um the the last price go around, we only had received two numbers back from the contractors. Others have kind of dropped off and said they didn't any longer have the ability, I guess, to price it. Um we'd need to reach out to our general contractor to find that the exact reasoning, but there was a number of pricing, I think, from three different versions of drawings that were sent out as they evolved.
Yeah, just to add the thoughts.
If I, if I may add to that, uh it's unfortunate that when you attach the the quote for the pricing that it was, it was itemized, but there was no pricing associated with it other than the total price.
Oh. Um.
That's within, I'm sure that's what's in our report.
Uh okay, um yeah, I think Robert sent that through. Uh we have a full description. It's seven pages of a quote. Here, it's very, very well detailed with quantities and and whatnot. Um we can definitely either get that to you or I don't know how to share on this platform, but I could.
Any other questions? The council? Counselor Rankin, go ahead.
Uh just one further to to the uh plan that has been impl- or going to be implemented. Uh the Alfred Fox one. What is the next lowest cost or what was the the, I guess, the lowest cost estimate that you had to complete this project? The because this one would be so much higher. I'm just wondering. Um you said there were several that were that were were submitted. I'm just wondering what the lowest amount was.
Well, this was the lowest amount for the approved, the city approved design. Um I think the nine twenty eight that came from a a very limited scope that went out last fall, I believe, um was the lowest price at that time and through drawing reviews and whatnot, different details have gotten added to the drawings and this this is the lowest number we receive uh uh on the from this go around.
Um I know, Counselor McCabe, you have a question, but I just have one. And I, Darren, maybe I could ask you to speak to it. I mean, they've taught us outline that there's some been some changes in scope of this project. Um can you uh or Tammy or?
I think I'll maybe defer to that's great.
Yeah, I mean, if you could just talk about what the nature of those changes in scope that they're alluding to might be, that would be helpful.
Yep, through you, Mayor Lennox. Um so during the twenty twenty two cost estimate, it was a preliminary design for the signalization work. And then since that time, it went to MTO to review and provide comments. And part of their comments was that uh Mount Forest Drive had to be aligned to provide left turn lane, so it aligns with the new entrance to Sobeys. Um so that was um included in their final design that we have now. And then there is also um urbanization on Mount Forest Drive for about, I think, a hundred and fifty meters. And then it has a storm collection there as well for regrading to allow proper drainage um to get away from the intersection.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor.
So sorry, with that, Tammy, I've got a so it was MTO um revisions, not uh the Township of Wellington North revisions that have caused this increases.
So the MTO revisions was to have the left turn lane, which we had to shift Mount Forest Drive to include a straight through or a right turn lane.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So I guess this is uh maybe for you, uh Todd and Mike. Um so if I boil this down in my mind, what you're asking for is our taxpayers to foot the uh the bill for the increase for a private corporation. Is that right? If I'm boiling it right down to the bare minimum?
Uh I think we're asking for fifty percent of the increase.
So still from taxpayers?
Yes.
Um, okay, I have another question for staff. Um as we were entering into this arrangement with with Crombie. Um I'm assuming we delegated the responsibility of getting the quotes and looking after the cost of the intersection to them. And then we would enter into a cost sharing arrangement. Is that correct?
That's right. That's the the process we uh we went through.
And was so Todd and Michael, is that not your understanding as well as that we were delegating that part of it to you?
I believe so. Again, I wasn't involved in this project at the start, the one that that took place.
Good.
Yeah, I'm not me as well. I'm not aware of the specific conversations that were had. I wasn't part of them, but uh that was my understanding of them.
Okay, um any other questions or comments? Are these gentlemen, when we has the new council, okay?
I guess I just have one just uh after what I just heard uh from you, uh Michael and Todd. So how familiar are you on this situation? Like, are you just coming in on this issue or have you kind of been with it for day one or just sounds like you're not all that familiar with it? Is that right?
No.
Maybe I misunderstood?
Not to to go, we're, I've been involved with it since day one. I haven't been involved with the specific conversations with Darren and our colleague, Robert Blacklock, and what 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 the what their understanding was. We've been working towards, uh you know, basically, this has been the agreement. This is what has surfaced as part of our S P A process and we've we've responded by um to your point uh contacting their G C and putting this out to market in terms of getting competitive pricing together for this cost sharing agreement.
All right, thank you.
And my involvement uh has, I guess, been since Jan or December. Um I uh I work with Michael now since December. Uh I think this discussion started prior to me being involved in Ontario projects.
Counselor Burke, go ahead.
Yeah, so not that it's going to change my minds, but um just for clarification, through this uh cost sharing agreement, what, and I put this out to either staff or um Sobeys, Crombie, um was it ever discussed that it would be a fifty fifty share or it was just a cost sharing?
It was my understanding. It was a fifty fifty share. Look, I guess after the Canadian Tire portion was taken from it, but I like, I I wasn't directly involved in those discussions, so I may be wrong in that.
Thank you. As I said, it's not gonna, it's not gonna change my mind. Uh I believe that uh the cost of doing business continues to increase. Uh we see it every day with our projects. Um and I don't support spending any more money as Counselor McCabe has alluded to. It comes from our taxpayers. Um and it's the price of doing business.
Yeah, I think Michael was trying to say something. I'm just gonna let this play out a little bit and then I come back to you, Counselor Rankin. That's okay. Michael, did you? I know you kind of were trying to say something and then kind of get cut off, so I just to.
Uh yeah, no, I was just speaking to to our last discussion of the involvement of of the process and whether it was a fifty fifty agreement. Uh that was my understanding as well. I didn't have a clarity on the the other parties, the Canadian tires and whatnot, and what they're they're sharing, the agreement looked like. I knew there were some talks on it, but I wasn't involved in those talks specifically.
Hey, Darren? Yeah, um thank you, Mayor Lennox. So the uh the number of the township contribution of uh four oh two five hundred that we budgeted for um came from uh the nine hundred and twenty eight thousand. Um we subtracted the Canadian Tire contribution and divided it in half. And that's where uh that's where we came up with the uh the township contribution that we put forward in the in the budget.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Counselor Rankin?
Through you, Mayor Lennox. Has Canadian Tire been contacted to see if they will increase their share of this project?
Through you, Mayor Lennox. Uh uh no Canadian Tire has has not been contacted to request more money. Uh whenever we entered into the site plan agreement for Canadian Tire, we entered into a separate agreement where um Canadian Tire uh promised to pay a certain amount of a fee up to a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars.
Any other questions for these gentlemen? Because uh our next item will be deal with the report on this. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, and we'll get a report to deal with as part of our agenda and we'll see where we go from there.
Thank you.
You. Okay, so we're moving on to our items for consideration, which is, of course, the the report here and the recommendation is that the Council of Corporation of the Township of Wellington North receive report C B O twenty twenty three dash zero nine being reported on the development agreement for Crombie Property Holdings Limited. And further, the council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign the bylaw to enter into the agreement in the form are substantially the same form as the draft agreement. Okay, well, I better read this first. So alternatively, council could take the direction that the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Wellington North received report C B O twenty twenty three dash zero nine being reported on the development agreement for Crombie Property Holdings. And further, the council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign the bylaw to enter into an agreement in the form are substantially the same form as the draft agreement as amended to reflect the awarded cost of the intersection, one million, three hundred and thirty four thousand, seven hundred and sixty nine dollars and forty four cents with the township's contribution being seven hundred and twenty eight, eight eighty four seventy two. So the first option is the original amount. Second option, it would be the additional amount that is requested through Crombie. Counselor Burke?
So I'll move the first option.
Okay. Do I have a second or for that?
Yeah, I can second it.
Counselor McCabe? Okay, any discussion on that one? Or have we covered it all already? Okay, got a motion on the floor. We got no further questions. I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. So we have a bylaw here. And the bylaw recommendation is that bylaw number fifty two dash twenty twenty three be read a first, second, and third time and enacted. Could I get a mover in a second or for that, please? Moved by Counselor Rankin, seconded by Counselor Hearn. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We'll move on to our confirming bylaw. The recommendation that bylaw number fifty three dash twenty twenty three be a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Wellington North at its special meeting held on July fourth, twenty twenty three. You read a first, second, and third time and enacted. Could I get a mover in a second or for that, please? Moved by Counselor Rankin, seconded by Counselor McCabe. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And uh before I adjourn the meeting, just to you gentlemen uh from uh Crombie. Uh so councils at this at this stage has decided not to make an additional contribution to this project. Uh I don't know where that leaves you guys. I don't know where that leaves you guys, but certainly our door remains open as. As this project moves forward, we certainly like to see it move forward, unfortunately. We have seen some instances over the past year or so of of, you know, things not moving. As quickly as you seem to, your group seemed to think they would. But there was also instances where your group wasn't able to deliver on what you committed to as well. So I'm I'm, I struggle with some of this. Process, and I hope that we can make this work and get to get on with it as I, it's in everybody's interest to do so.
Yeah, always thank you for your time, we'll. Present what we. Been through here today to Robert, I guess, ultimately his. His call, so.
Thank you, all right, thank you, so we'll move to adjournments, I have a recommendation that the special council meeting of July fourth, twenty twenty three be adjourned at. Two thirty four P M, moved by Council McCabe, seconded by councillor Burke, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.